...T H C and has a high percentage of CBD, it will just be, it's literally, you will have zero effects. An interesting thing about CBD as well is, it's kind of embarrassing, but yeah, we would have company parties and people would be too high. And people would be really, really stoned, usually from edibles, because edibles, when you eat them, break down into hydroxy six. You can take CBD and it'll bring you back down. It's really an incredible thing. I don't completely understand it entirely, but I do know that for depression, anti-inflammatory, anxiety, embolism, nausea, and psychedelics, it works like a charm. And we do, we will be growing a strain that's just over the T H C threshold, but that isn't 26% CBD.
Fifty-eight counties.
Federal.
Okay, is there any other questions in the board? Okay, we want to thank our presenters for their very nice presentation. The way this is genderized is we're going to receive a report from them. And with that, they will move on to item H2, which is a report from the Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee. And at that time, that'll be the, maybe that's when we'll take public comment, because we'll just get, kill two birds with one stone on this item. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to item H2, which is the Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee. So I guess, you want to talk about this first, Bob? And I guess we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Paul Burris, County Council. And so we had four by the Director of the Chair at the turn of the year Marijuana Committee, those supervisors, Peter and Gallagher, to discuss cannabis activity in Lassen County. We have known for some time that Lassen County needed to make some form of a decision on whether it was going to permit cannabis activity on a commercial scale in Lassen County. We know that we have been called upon to make that decision because of some of the requirements that were posed upon us pursuant to what started as M R S A, what became M C R S A, which is, what do they call that, Cannabis Regulation Safety Act? But then also with the advent of Prop 64, the new member election, the prospect of commercial cannabis activity across California is certainly, and decisions having to be made whether we engage in that activity or not here. The practical legislative scheme that has been set up at the state level, both in the initiative process in Prop 64, and also through the legislative process in M C R S A, is such that in order for an entity, an individual, a group, our presenters here today, to acquire a state license of the kind that they've indicated that they'd like to acquire, that would have to be applied for, to the state of California. And prior to doing so, prior to becoming eligible for such an issuance of license, you would have to first apply to the local government and get authorization to operate awesome in the form of a permitted license, whatever you want to call it. And, but before you can get any such of a license or permit or like, the local government has to pass upon the issue of whether or not they want to allow that activity to occur in the first place. And so really what the legislation, what the initiative did was retain local control. And so what you're seeing is, and this is the discussion we've had at the Ad Hoc Committee, you're seeing a patchwork quilt across the state of California between cities and counties. Everybody's adopting a little different approach. Some are permissive, some are not. Those that are permissive, the complexion of what they allow and the manner in which they allow it is taking different forms. What we do know also is that through the legislation and through the initiative, which was formed through California Forum, a new state regulatory agency and, is that the Bureau of, yeah, Bureau of Cannabis Regulation, they changed their name. First they were V M M R or Bummer. The Bureau of Cannabis Regulation, V C R. So I guess the point is, is that they're in the process, their charge is to develop regulations, a regulatory framework for state implementation to govern cannabis activity across the state. Now, there's some other submissions, there's food and ag missions, there's public health issues, and there are different departments dealing with that. But the principal department in the state of California, through the Department of Consumer Affairs, as I understand it, is Bureau of Cannabis Regulation. And their charge is to begin to issue licenses for folks that have applied to them by January 1, 2018. And that's why I think our folks are from Colorado, our friends in Colorado are here, is to basically have their app on the top of the stack, we might guess. And it's not unusual from other places. Other groups are trying to get their apps in person as well. But we also know that the Bureau of Cannabis Regulation is behind their proposed draft regulations for their framework for implementation of cannabis regulation in California. It's not out, it's not in draft form, as I understand it. Certainly, they've been having meetings and they're trying to receive input, but we don't know where they're going yet. And so there is a mystery there. Nevertheless, the Ad Hoc committee met, and there was much discussion. That was generally the framework of the discussion. I think what would be most prudent for me would be to defer the members of that Ad Hoc Committee for a report as to what the conclusions were, if any. I hope I answered your question, Mr. Chairman.
You did a very good job. We'll turn it back over here to the members of the Ad Hoc Committee.
So the approach has been along the lines of proposition in California for quite some time now, but with the passage of 64, one of the jobs of the Ad Hoc Committee was to sit down and figure out how to create a county-level framework for marijuana. And so you can start any way you want to, slice the onion. But once you get to the top of the, now I'm going with my mixed metaphors, you're in trouble. The problem here is the very top, it's at the federal government. We mentioned before, Kine has come into town. I think these guys are great as far as an example of free market capitalism in form of people willing to wager large amounts of money in their own ability to create a product and then sell it. That's the American dream, if you will. But the federal government doesn't view it that way. And so the problem we have is a disconnect between the two laws, the sets of laws that we face. And the supremacy clause pretty much lines this one out. In the past, what that seems like to me, the effect of that has been to limit the access of these companies to the banking sector, and has also put them in danger of raids by DEA or, in the most case, federal bodies. And even with the passage of Prop 64, we find the same problem. In the last eight years, Colorado, or in the last years, Colorado's gone through their experiment under an administration which was at least neutral towards the advancement of their industry, if not with items like the In Sand Guidelines and the Coal Memorandum, who I could almost argue that they were closing in on being sympathetic to the industry. So that disconnect could be bridged possibly. The Trump administration has brought on, Sean Spicer has said some things that have been, it's definitely not completely set to stone. However, they chose as their Attorney General, Jeffrey Sessions, and his stance on marijuana, it's not something that I have a lot of questions about, I think it's pretty clear, particularly on the recreational side. So what we're looking at then is a federal government that won't be necessarily neutral to that industry. And that could mean all sorts of things, anything from increased DEA raids, to racketeering charges, to enforcing banking industry regulations and laws even more fiercely. So to my mind, that closes the commercial aspects of marijuana in our county. Now, I'm getting off of where we were in the Ad Hoc Committee, because now we're talking about my community. So we have to be careful of that. But what we still have is that disconnect between the federal government and the state government, and particularly on the recreational side, and particularly on the money side. So that's why I'm uncomfortable with any kind of regulation, and that's why our Ad Hoc Committee began talking about a moratorium on many of the licenses. So I think that's the point. Once we got to that, what we're waiting for is some form of clarity between the federal government, the state government, and what they want to do in terms of county governance.
Yeah. So the other part we talked about was not wanting to be the first kid on the block to come up with the regulations as well. There's 58 other counties that have a whole lot of other resources than we do to create these regulations. And so that was partially the reason for the moratorium. Many of you know that I'm a retired police chief, I've dealt with the marijuana issue for most of my career. I've struggled with the difference between the laws in California and the federal laws throughout my career, still struggling with that because of the supremacy clause. So David's right, until the federal government can work this out, it sounds like some of it is being worked out, at least in terms of the medical side. And I've always been sympathetic to the medical side. In fact, I had probably a lot of you all come to my office in Suzieville and talk to me about that when I first got there, and I have been sympathetic. So that's why we also, in this committee, were sympathetic to the medical side and want to go along with the framework that the state has set up in order for those who have medical scripts to grow their own, be able to have their own, that kind of thing. So those were a couple of the items that we talked about in our committee, you know, have the moratorium, but again, look at putting together some framework for those with medical issues to grow according to the regulations that have been set by the state so far.
And the goal, we didn't talk about it because the compelling testimony for me, anyway, in the last couple of years on this, are those people that are Lassen County residents that are affected by something that they believe that the marijuana will cause a positive effect on. The science is certainly not in on any of that, but it's not for me to determine. What I felt, and I think our committee felt, was that there needed to be a small space outdoors that allows for those with a medical script to take care of their particular needs. And that one is, my feeling on that one, and I believe this was committed by the committee, was that there's no cash involvement there necessarily. And so you no longer have to worry about anti-money laundering, you don't necessarily have to worry about know-your-customer law on regulations for the banks, because as Connie points out, and there's a lot of organizations like their own, they require a third-party banking solution, because anything that gets you to the primary causes you to have to answer affirmatively to a question as to what you're doing that is a violation of federal law. So if you go into a bank and you tell them, as I understand it, you go into a bank and you tell them that you're in a marijuana-related industry, that's not going to work, that's you admitted violating federal law.
Okay, can I just make one clarification?
Please.
Not so much about the banking stuff, but just that presently in California, there is actually no commercial retail allowed. So what Kine is actually talking about right now is just medical marijuana. So if they got a license or a permit to have these indoor grows, it would all be medicinal marijuana. And the Bureau of Cannabis Regulation is working on regulations for the future to implement commercials. So right now, we're, everyone in California is talking, or right now presently, growing and distributing under the medical marijuana laws.
Right. What we're discussing though is a limited 10-foot square space that can't be for an individual with, you know, without money transactions.
Right, right. I want to make it clear.
No, I want to be clear too, that you folks will be grown up and make money, whether it be on the medical side or the recreation, which again is fine, that's the American way. So that's what the Ad Hoc Committee talked about.
There was three of the supervisors sitting here that went to this R C R C marijuana meeting, the Rural Counties Association. And there is no question that California is gearing up towards commercialization, growing of marijuana. And the way they left it with me is they were going to issue the licenses and leave the county stuck with the enforcement. That was what I saw in that meeting. I just think that medical marijuana probably is not going to be touched. We've got to address that problem as soon as possible. There's, the state has already got department heads, am I wrong? I'm sorry, I need.
Yeah, my name is Jennifer Granger.
And you're their attorney?
Yes.
Okay. So the state's already got department heads in place, so their commercials growing of marijuana. So their intent is to get this done, and what kind of timeframe?
Well, January 18th is the goal for when they're going to roll out the regulatory scheme and then people, because right now, we don't know exactly what the state is going to require for licenses. So that's what they're working on right now, is creating the regulatory scheme, and then they'll start, they start doing applications for licenses. So licenses may be, they may start issuing them early winter through next spring, possibly, January 18th.
And the thing that scares me about that whole thing is they're going to draw up the enforcement when this, all this stuff comes, on the counties. And we already, deficit spending last year. And if there's a way to address that deficit spending, I think we should take a look at it. Yes, Tom, that was a good call on the R C R C. You're exactly right, the state of California is not prepared at all for this marijuana thing. It's been 20 years on the medical side, and they're just finally now getting the ducks in a row on that, and now they went to the recreational. And we are, California is so far unprepared for this, it's not even funny, and it's just going to, it's just going to be ugly. You know, the C D F A, Department of Food and, or the pesticide regulation, they've just got, they have suggested applications for herbicides and pesticides for the marijuana. But as an agriculture user, you know, you actually get an applicator's license, you have to get used permits, and it's just not fair, and it's right, and it's not right. So anyway, I just want to let you know that California is not at all prepared for legal assistance, Commissioner, do you have something on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to comment a little bit on the current status of where we are to enter this next growing season, and maybe try to focus a little bit on getting some direction to staff as far as where we go from here. I've attended the committee meetings with the Marijuana Committee. With regard to the current situation, as everyone knows, we're in a band which allows for indoor grows only pursuant to the recent Prop 64. Over the last couple of years, of course, we've seen some, what I would call rogue grows, particularly in North County, but in all parts of the county, where people have ignored essentially our Title 19 of the county code, which allows some very limited growing under certain circumstances. We, as you know, we engaged in some enforcement activity last year on that. We did obtain a lot of success in voluntary compliance, and we also did some involuntary abatements of those. And we'll be bringing back to the board in a couple of weeks, a recommendation to enforce the penalty portion of those abatements. And interestingly, those, the total abatements that we're bringing back is around $192,000. I, of course, wouldn't expect, you know, a full rate of collection on that, but certainly I think we'll see some collection on those efforts. With regard to medical versus recreational, we've got a little discussion of this in the subcommittee. The tax structure, I think, and probably in Colorado, and I think in California, is basically going to be heavily taxed on the recreational side with some waivers of that tax for medical purposes. I mean, in my cynical view, if you want to look at it that way, I don't see that most, there's going to be much market for recreational marijuana, because anybody with $35 and access to the internet can get a medical card in California. So I don't know why someone would want to pay the tax on recreational unless it's just a, you know, alarm, they're going into a storm. So I think that, you know, that's a big loophole in that structure, and probably is in Colorado too, these guys might want to comment, that anybody can get a medical card, and I don't think that's going to likely change. So the taxation structure may look good on paper, but implementation, which would likely be at the retail level, it probably wouldn't affect this type of operation at all, because it's not going to be sold in the county. Would probably, the retail sales tax is probably not going to be great, at least in Lassen County. The reason we're all here is to discuss this, I think, and this is another interesting backdrop, is that the fear of criminal sanction for growing marijuana has eroded to a level of risk tolerance where a lot of people are willing to take it. And that's, I think, what we got out last year in a lot of these grows, there's, and why we're dealing with it from an administrative standpoint, which I continue to think is probably the right way to go forward in terms of trying to gain compliance with whatever rules that we establish. So maybe that was the background I wanted to.
So I kind of guess, I just said, okay, well, we can just, I guess, kind of where we're at now, I'd like to see if the Ad Hoc Committee, if they had a recommendation to give the board, they can maybe describe what that recommendation might be, what not to take any action today. And then from that, we can open it up to the public, and we can take comments on, you know, the proposed recommendations that the Ad Hoc Committee may have, and then after you guys make your statement. So I'll let one of you do.
I think our recommendation was that we would recommend a moratorium at this time until we see other counties come up with some good framework, and also go along with the state framework for the 10 by 10 ability to grow outdoors. I think those were the two recommendations.
So the recommendation, as I understood it, Mr. Chairman, was a moratorium for, at least for the short term, a known commercial cannabis activity, whether it be recreation or medical. But then at the same time, aside from commercial activity, perhaps the Title 19, the conditions of cultivation, allowing some small after the block, has a change from where it is now.
Okay, very good, well, thank you. So with that now, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public comment, and maybe I'll just go kind of sit up there in the middle and give you the microphone, and remember if you could state your name to the record, so we get that on record, and then we can open there. Okay, so if we can just ask, somebody can step up there, Randy, you have your hand in here, and while you're walking, do that, hold him over here, he's in earlier hand, I'm going to want to make, need to talk about that real quick.
All right. I was asked, I was asked if I wanted to comment about the doctor recommendation side, and it's absolutely complicated. In Colorado, you have to have a legitimate reason, and you can't just go online for $35, you just go to the doctor. It was a lot more than a role, and they were allowing everybody to have their cannabis activity back when they first got going. But over the courses, I guess, the past seven years, or no, way more actually, I guess it started in 2004, since then, they've really cracked out on doctors, and they're going to do the same thing here.
Under M C R S A, they've made it, they're making it much more difficult in the next year to get medical marijuana recommendations. You have to actually go into a doctor, he diagnoses, they have to look at your medical records, so there will no longer be hot shot doctors.
Yeah, what happened in Colorado too, was that the doctors that were issuing tons of license, or tons of cards, or kinds of words, were actually prosecuted, and some of them were suspended. So after they got prosecuted and lost their ability to practice medical practice, the rest of the industry tightened down. And so medical is becoming much more exclusive, and recreational is beginning to get more momentum. And obviously, that's in the state's interest, because they tax recreational, as always.
Well, thank you. As we move forward, we'd like to, I'd like to remind everybody that we're going to have a three-minute limit, and to try to keep our comments to be unrepetitive if we can. So, well, Randy, I'll turn this over to you in just one second, and so while he's doing that, if we could get gem sheets, if he could fork his way on up here and be in line to be next right after Randy. So Randy, go right ahead.
First, I had a question for the Ad Hoc Committee. With the current problem in Lassen County being in the northern part of the county, I lead the legal grows, what is the moratorium going to do to fix that? What's the potential outcome of passing the moratorium, dealing with that problem?
I don't know, let me specifically discuss that in the committee meeting, but I think that the essence of your question is what is the enforcement going to be regarding whatever rules we choose to put in place? And I think barring some changes, and we are considering some changes in the method, whether it be a moratorium or a change in the county code, Title 19, it most likely will remain an abatement, a nuisance abatement sanction, where the county will go through the, you know, the process required by law in terms of hearing, notification, or abatement, and eventually physical abatement and assessment of penalties of the individuals. That, you know, last year, we saw a lot more grows that we were able to abate this year. I think we've come up with some ways to streamline things and do more of a batch approach to grows, because I think we're going to see them regardless of what is adopted. And I think the only legal mechanism we've identified currently is to do that abatement process, and I think that's exactly what we'll do.
So with that, with it being a similar abatement process, even if you could speed up abatement, if there's an estimated 300 gardens out there, how many gardens per day can you guys actually go and abate per day?
It's much more complicated than that. How many grows can we visit per day? There is a process prescribing the law for nuisance abatement, which requires multiple visits, citation, hearing, and then eventually order. All along the way, there's opportunities for people to, you know, try to utilize the court system to slow that down. So it's not as simple as how many per day can we visit.
That's my point, is how many abatements per day did you guys add? That's my point, is how many abatements per day did you guys average as far as abating these nuisance gardens? These nuisance gardens came here every...